Minutes, November 16th, 2016. Regular session. Any additions or corrections?
There's one more. On public hearing, I put "O" instead of "O".
Spelling here in the farm ways public hearing.
Yeah.
Any more? Motion to accept the minutes of regular session, November 16th, 16th. Second.
The motion is second to accept a minutes. For November 16th, 2016. All of you here say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Citizens input.
I just have a quick reminder, we still need our street sign put up on the street, Marshall Street, or not Marshall, Heritage.
Heritage.
Yeah, they were gonna get it put up, but they haven't yet, so.
Is that subject come home late and early on?
Yep. Well, the FedEx man came down the street and he didn't know where he was at, so.
Citizens input.
You guys need to talk about it?
No, I mean, we're just trying to get more involved and trying to show up to more of these meetings, trying to get people our age to show up and get more involved, so. We're here just to listen and see what's on the agenda, so.
Did you pick one up at the door, or was there any out there?
I told them, yeah.
Alright, thanks for coming. Do you have something?
Yeah, I got a couple things. I'd heard rumor from town Rochester, it's not really a rumor, but I know out in Little One Wayzey you're having problems with taxes are too high, they got a lot of small business that's looking to move to a place with a little less taxes and they've been leaving in groves. And I know Mayor Ted Denton sent out about six, seven hundred letters, whether they're paper or email, to these small towns and these little, come up to town, some true businesses, and trying to rope some in, and I guess they've got a few of them coming. And I was just thinking, I was like, well, shoot, no more difficult than that was, maybe that's something might be interesting looking into. You know, if you can get a couple of them to come in and discuss whatever, you know, you had thirty, forty jobs in this town, or shoot even ten, that's a substantial amount to start out with, you know. So, I'd heard about that and I was like, well, I have a too terrible idea, I just wanna bring that up to everybody's attention and maybe there's something to check into, maybe not. But, another thing I'd wanna bring up is, for future reference, something along the lines of advertising. It's a, you drive up and down 31, which is kind of the main heartbeat here in Indiana, especially for this town, but it seems like for the most part they come in, 'cause you see McDonald's on the top of the BP, I was wondering if maybe something ought to be looked into as to maybe write a billboard just south of Rochester, maybe north of Plymouth or something like that, put a sign up, said, "This is our good, so this is what we have to offer", add that hometown touch to it, or whichever connotation you want to put to it. But, maybe a little bit of money, a sense of investing would show and try to bring people, and bring people in and help business. You know, part of being an entrepreneur is you see a need, you fill a need, and if there's no need, they don't fill it, no jobs are created. So, if you can see you got a bunch of people coming to town, we're packing the restaurants here and they're just full, you know, then someone says, "Well, it's time for me to start up a restaurant." And they'll be looking to either one of the buildings here in Main Street or something around, open a restaurant or anything of the nature. So, you know, fund more people in, check out the shops and things, and hopefully do a little bit of sales, but we check into something, I mean, if you ever listen to B-100, they've got Michigan, they put out an ad over the radio, and it's Tim Allen's doing it, and it's just so, "We paint Smith and get a piece of gorgeous, you just wanna pack your bags and leave", you know. I'm not saying that Tim Allen's in our budget, but maybe something of that would be helpful or beneficial. Just food for thought, something to chew on, but I've had a couple people interested in my storage front right now, but the big thing for them is, they've been food-based, and they're like, "I don't know if just the townspeople will be enough to have myself work there and have other employees", like, "Well, I understand that", and they had brought it up to my attention, like, "There's no advertising." It's like, "I see that, you know, I understand, and maybe if we could kind of mull it over and think something towards that, maybe, whatever."
We have talked about more signage right here.
Yeah.
Your idea of billboards, otherwise that's...
Yeah, 'cause the sign up front would be great to just show passersby, but you know, if you're coming from Indy or Kokomo and you're going to South Bend or whatever, if you get before Rochester, you get the signs they see in their heads, they'll skip Rochester and come here, like, one of them, they've got ice cream and sandwiches and burgers and, you know, things of that nature, and they got arcade games, and they're free. So, you got kids and you're traveling through town, you get to Rochester, everybody's got a Burger King, but if you can, yet again, solid experience, and you can get the kids out of the car, then go play some video games and calm down, video games, but arcade games and calm down, or get crazy, whichever, and eat some food and then get back on the road, you know, that's different. And people look for that over Burger, or at least I do, I look for that over Burger King or McDonald's any day. So, maybe something before our bigger towns where people will pull off and eat before they come by here, maybe that would be something to look at.
I think the, our planning commission has been discussing putting a nice big sign, not as fancy as Plymouth, because that's...
They are, they are.
They are talking about that, yeah, you're right. It's been brought up and some of these other committees, you know, this oversight stuff, they're working on these things, so, yeah.
Well, I say, I know, I knew about the signs, we talked about that in the springtime, a little bit before then, so I just kind of was thinking one day, and was like, "Well, the sign here is great, but we ought to think about something further to get the passersby to see us and think about us when they come."
Any ideas? Thank you, Charlie. Any other citizens input? Alright, moving on. Mark Humble, Marshall County Economic Development.
Not gonna happen, we gave a report last time. So, we've got enough to report, so, alright, we'll give you one next time.
Thanks. Old Business Attorney Report.
I'm giving everybody one of these certificates regarding compliance with the mechanism statutes. This is kind of one of these once-a-year things that all of you guys have to sign, and then that all gets delivered to the executive of the town, that's you Dustin, so, yes, you could sign one too, and that gets back to Dustin, it's just gotta be done before the end of the year. Can you get that one to Julie? And that's what I had on that end of things. The other issue was this letter to the Speedway folks, I said I revised version of that, it needs to be basically, I need a go-ahead or I need the council to approve or okay, or tell them to send the letter out, we'll see, but what do you want to do with it?
Personally, I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Please let it... Motion, Derek, proceed with the letter to Speedway.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to have Derek proceed with the letter to Speedway folks. All of you here say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that'll get it done. That's all I had. Thank you, Derek.
I'd like to accept the attorney's report.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to accept an attorney report. All of you here say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright. Board openings, Marshall County Tourism. Planning Commission, redevelopment, and BZA. If you're interested, submit a letter. Good work. Any other old business?
I've got a couple things. Labyrinth building, better get close to tear that down. Couple have asked me what a start date was, we talked about this a little bit in our workshop, but are you looking at March, April, I mean, looking at the first quarter next year or...
We're hoping first quarter, but we have to sit down and write up a plan first.
Yeah, that's actually...
We have, this is, that's one of those public works statutes, apply with that, which just means we've gotta get, we've gotta put together the plans and specifications, that doesn't have to be some, you know, thirty-page outline or anything, but it does have to be something so that when that's advertised, or I think, I don't think that one's being advertised, I'm working from memory now, I think we just have to invite quotes from three different contractors, because we have to send them that invitation to bid. And so, we have to have those specs ready to go, because other people can bid as well. But, we've gotta have that prepared and ready to go.
So, should we not be getting bids yet then, until that's done, or...
We have to send those out so that they know that when they bid it, when they tear it down, it's gotta be done in so many days.
There's some time requirements to think about. And that can be part of it too, that, you know, what George is saying, that could be part of the specs, okay, when you start work, we want it done within thirty days, or...
Okay.
And ground will be put back the way we want it, whether it's limestone, sand, grass, or whatever.
Okay, so...
As soon as we get that done, which will probably be, I'm guessing it'll be the month of January, when we get around to getting that done.
Well, I mean, like I said, I'm getting close now, but should I hold off on that, or should I, what do you want me to do?
I would probably hold off till I get that bid sheet, 'cause they could throw in a bid, and we throw it, and we want to put down the gravel base or whatever, asphalt or whatever, then they're gonna come in and say, "Oh, well, that wasn't a bid."
Oh, the other thing that's brought up to me with the library is, most of these contracts where they can tear it down, they have to have an asbestos check, so that's something else I'm gonna have to do. So, I contacted somebody, they were supposed to come down this Friday to look at it, but I'll hold up on that too. Unless you want me to go ahead and just go ahead and get it done?
That wouldn't have a problem with you, or not with Derek, or should we have it?
No, that may be good to know, just so you get an accurate bid and accurate quote from them, I hate to have a bid at one number and then they turn around and tell you, "Well, they've asbestos, so you're stuck with us", and that raises the price by eighty thousand.
Good.
I mean, I'm not really the one to call the shots, but it would seem to me that it would be good to know if that was gonna be something they're gonna run into regardless of the contract.
If he gets down there and gets to it, it'd seem like we should have that before the end of the year, so, before you get started with yours, you'll have that information. Good. Um, everything is in your package, you should have the reimbursement for area schooling, I don't know if you got a chance to look at that or not. Was that in there?
No. I think, I thought you said just to give that to him on the side. Sorry.
I broke it down to the three years, and I just put all the dollar marks on it, so, we can talk about that the next time, if I don't have it right here. It's pretty much what we talked about before, it just has all the numbers on it, so.
With accept that is legal document, I believe.
I've seen it before, and I met with Jamie, and I've seen it, and talked to Jamie about it, and we kind of decided that it'd just be best to have Mr. Barton sign that, just to acknowledge and recognize that he was gonna be mad by this, as opposed to what he'd signed earlier, but it's all subject to the council's approval, so I think you really just ought to voice vote and approve that.
My promotion that we accept the payback schedule for Harrison Barton's schooling.
A second.
Got a motion, a second to accept the payback schedule for Harrison Barton's schooling. All of you here say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Let me just say one more thing, we took applications, we interviewed for the general labor position, and I recommend that we hire Mike Fishburne.
That means that we allow Jamie to hire Mike Fishburne full-time?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to hire Mike Fishburne full-time, to allow Jamie to hire Mike Fishburne full-time. All of you here say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Alright, thanks.
That's his copy. Phil, have him file his personnel record.
I have one in there already.
Please, sir.
I have one in there already. What?
His personnel file, a copy of that, and...
Oh, yeah.
Derek will probably need one, discount file.
I'll understand it.
Any other old business?
I have one thing. While we're talking about employees, I need permission to run an ad or hire a service for cleaning for the EMS. And possibly the VNR, I thought I could get maybe some of the groups that use the VNR for free to help in cleaning, but that doesn't seem to be... I mean, rail services, I talked to the head of rail services, and she was like, "We do clean it", you know, and I said, "Well, we only need somebody to kind of deep-clean it once a month, you know, make sure it's dusted and really done right", and she said that she would help. We are re-looking at the contracts for some of, you know, the VNR, it's something we're gonna have to address at the first of the year, but we only need somebody one day a month in the VNR. Susan will still go over and do, like, VNR checks after parties and stuff, and I will pay her a couple of hours a month for that. And then, I found somebody that's willing to clean all the windows, inside and out, for this building, the EMS building and the VNR, and he was very reasonable because, and he'll do it three times a year. But, I'm still looking at, Cory's gonna clean his own office, Richie's gonna clean his own office, and looking at somebody just to clean the council room in the EMS building, and the foyer, and the bathrooms.
So, you just need to put this in the papers, that what you're...
Well, I either need to hire a service, or I need to put it in the paper and hire an individual.
Or we do it ourselves, like we shouldn't have been doing it for the last two years.
Or we can make that ruling, but then you have to force it.
You just said Richie's gonna take care of his, right?
I didn't say that.
You said Richie was gonna take care of his office?
Richie's gonna take care of his office.
And you're gonna take care of your office. And you can clean the floors. You're gonna work.
George can clean that as well.
We have a cleaning year for here, but we need somebody to take over the season. And then carpet cleaning, I think that we should just hire a service twice a year, or, you know, whenever that they need it. But, so, we're really only looking at a cleaning lady for maybe the VNR once a month and the EMS.
Is that weekly?
The council room and all of that only gets cleaned every other week. Cory's office gets cleaned weekly. Well, Cory's area, I would say, not necessarily his office.
Thoughts?
I don't know how this works, I had an idea. Would a high school student be able to do that?
I think it would have to be somebody that is not a minor, only because if they were to take anything, not saying they would...
Okay.
Or if, you know, Cory's got some confidential files laying on the desk or something, it has to be somebody that you can... I would love to do that, because then high schoolers could, I could probably get the seniors to do it all year long, you know what I mean, for their, for their community service, but do you think that's an issue?
I don't know, the community service would be great, having them in the EMS building, yeah.
So...
Is that something, you need somebody that was insured, in case they find their computer and break it or something?
You'd need somebody that was actually, yeah.
Insured.
Insured or bonded, you know what I mean, somebody that...
So, you want to put an ad in, or you just want to go and contact a service?
Well, I was kind of leaving it up to you guys.
So, the ones that are gonna be cleaning, it'd be the conference room over there and the bathrooms?
Yeah.
And the foyer.
And the foyer.
And the VNR.
And the VNR then once a month.
But, the problem is, is that, you know, you're talking sensitive areas with the police department and stuff, so...
That's where a service, if I'm licensed, would be...
Check on prices.
It just might be more expensive than what we're paying now.
Yeah, check on prices.
I'm just asking.
Maybe we can hire our crossing doors, we can...
I'll let you take care of that, George.
I just see it's funny that we hire people to clean up our own trash and stuff, it slays me, but... No, it just slays me.
So, contact the service.
Get some prices.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Any other old business?
Yeah, that's, I'd like to speak if I could, 'cause George brought it up last meeting. The fire department, George touched on it a little bit, I guess, last meeting, I wouldn't hear, but the fire department's looking at a little project here that we're gonna need some help with funding on. What it boils down to is, in recent years, the research has gone from firefighters dying from cardiac arrest to cancer, is killing more of us. So, we've talked about several years, getting into doing some multi-gas detecting in fire scenes, to draw a line in the sand of where you have to have all your personal protective gear on, your air on, and where you can take it off. And so, we're looking at buying some multi-gas detectors, which I'm not gonna delay you with all the numbers and things like that, and how they work or anything like that, but they'll be a four-function test, they'll test for lower explosive limits, oxygen level, carbon monoxide, and HCN, which is hydrogen cyanide. And what we'll use them for is around perimeter of fire, to determine where we can go without air and where we need our personal protective gear. We're looking to get two of them, one for each of the first-out engines. The price is gonna be approximately seventeen hundred dollars for two of them, and that will come with the calibration gas, the bump gas they call it, 'cause every now and then you gotta check them to make sure they work. So, every two years, you'd buy a bottle of gas that will take care of that, we'll be able to train our people in-house to do that, to make sure they're gonna work. The other part of the project is, is our gear. Our gear is very expensive, it's twelve hundred dollars a set, and we have no good way to clean it. So, what we're looking at is purchasing a washer extractor, specifically designed, it's a commercial-grade washer extractor, to run the turnout gear through and clean. And possibly a dryer, to dry it, because you're only supposed to use warm air. So, the dryer thing is something that I've been talking to the companies about, and they're supposed to be getting back to me, if we can set it for a certain temperature, say, "No, we'll not go with that temperature", then yeah, dryer would be great, because if not, you're gonna leave this gear set for three days to air-dry before you can put it back in service. So, once your gear's contaminated and you clean it, you're not gonna be able to go on a call for three days until it's dry, so you can use it again. So, that's why we're kind of looking at a dryer. What the fire department has proposed is, we have, we'll come up with five percent of the money, and we're gonna look at writing a grant after the first year to help pay for this. What we'd like from the council is to commit five percent, because when you write grants, you're better off, if you show you have vested interest, so we're gonna look at putting up ten percent of money from the town and the volunteers to go towards this grant, to work on getting a grant to pay for this. I don't have hard numbers right now, I just talked to another company today for forty-five minutes on the phone about washer and dryers, washer extractors, I don't want to get confused, there's a difference here, but washer extractors and a dryer. And the outside, five percent you could have, by putting these two projects together, I am going to say is gonna be about nine hundred dollars, is what the town would need to come up with. Mark and I talked the other night about it a little bit, we thought that if we took the five percent out of the budget next year, and watched our capital spending, 'cause it's not in a line item thing, watch our capital spending, and towards end of the year, if we didn't need that nine hundred dollars back, we'd have to do additional appropriation, make up the slack, which we don't wanna do, we don't anticipate doing, but it's just, the funding part of it, I'll leave it up to you guys to decide how you, if you want to do the five percent, to go along with this grant, and if, you know, Cory wanna come up with the money, if you wanna do something like that, or if you wanna do it a different way, that's entirely up to the council. So, what, one of the things I noticed on George's little list about the building is tearing out the wall over there in the bay restroom, which I haven't measured yet, I've talked with people today, if it'll work in there, 'cause that's gonna be an issue too, is where this is gonna fit. Because, you know, it's a commercial-grade washer extractor and it's a commercial-grade dryer, so, we're still working on trying to figure out where to put it. But, that wall knockout, that's probably gonna be one thing, it might work in that room with the showers and stuff that are already there, it's just something we're gonna have to do some measure and think about. The other thing is that this company, any of the companies I've talked to so far would expect us to have hose bibs in place, a drain, and electrical cutouts for the washer extractor and the dryer, and also, the dryer would be a natural gas dryer, because they say it's a lot more economical and easier to maintain. So, like I said, I could give you all kinds of stats, if you really want to listen to it, but I don't think you do. I spent eight hours in a class in April on know-your-smoke, and that's the things the trend's going to. Another thing to give you a heads-up for, like I said, gears, about twelve hundred dollars a set, approximately. Maybe towards the end of next year, we might look at writing another grant to get thirty sets of gears, so that everybody has two sets of gear. One set of gear is what they're using, it gets contaminated, it goes, gets washed, it gets dried, it gets inspected, and they have another set to wear while this other set's getting prepped to be used again. But, like I said, you're talking thirty sets a year at twelve hundred dollars, Suzanne, help me with the math, 'cause it's been a long frickin' day for me. And the other issue is, where are we gonna keep it? You know, we've had this discussion Monday night in our meeting, you know, I tossed out to everybody, think about where we're gonna store this stuff. If we do go two sets a year, where are we gonna store it, you know, keep it maintained and things like this here? So, any questions? It's like I said, I'm worried about the details.
I just, I thought we had discussed this. No, our budget is just, it's set up for equipment and that kind of stuff, I mean, it could all come out of this, but what he's saying is... Right, yeah. No, I thought we were all for it, I mean, Mark's bought it up before.
I've talked a little bit to somebody individually, when I've had a chance about it, but this, this, we're down to, the guys want to write a grant, they want to write a grant, they don't want to spend, they'd love to spend all the tax credit money if we had more to spend, but we don't. So, we'd like to try to write a grant to cover the cost of it, 'cause we realized, you know, the two projects together is gonna be close to eighteen thousand dollars. That's just a rough ballpark, because things are gonna be a bear... That's just a rough ballpark, because things are gonna be unbearable, because like I said, if we can't set the dryer at a certain temperature, we don't wanna go that route, because we don't want somebody to put a set of gear in there and ruin it, at twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, it seems to me, and this, I know it's not citizens' input, but getting the gear for the firemen to me, and, and the protection for the contaminated air and things like that, it's a lot more important to tear down that lousy library. I mean, we're, we're gonna spend fifty grand to tear down a library, put that puppy on hold, and you look at allocating what we need to do this, if we have to add on to the fire department back behind, we could do that, I mean, we, you could do that, you can buy all the gear, you can buy the safety stuff, the dryer, extractor, whatever.
Washer extractor.
Okay, okay. All that could be done for what we're gonna spend to tear the library down.
Once we have the library down, then we can tear down both buildings, put up one nice new building.
And there is a grant for that, key word is "nice."
Is that library virtually sound? No, we don't have to worry about walls falling in, or falling into the street, or anything like that, it is sound. It's just an asbestos problem, isn't it?
What's that? We don't know. We don't know.
Okay. Gotcha. Let's say, I, I'm not, I'm not discounting the idea, I just wanna make sure that it was at least sound enough, that it's not gonna fall over, or cause a problem later.
Not today.
Nope.
It rains outside, but...
When it's not raining outside.
And if push comes to shove, and you took the whole eighteen hundred dollars out of the budget and you had to reappropriate, that could go for, I mean, that wouldn't even be ten, or our ten, or you're looking at additional on top, if I'm not taking it out of the budget for the whole thing.
I'm just trying to... Yeah.
We're just trying to extend, extend our budget out a little bit, you know? Like I said, the, the multi-gas detectors, we started looking four or five years ago, and, uh, never really, got stuck in the mud on that, because of the fact, getting bad information about pricing and things, and the gentleman from Des Moines, well, the class I attended in the spring, really opened my eyes, and the company over there is one of the sponsors of the Know Your Smoke Coalition, and he was very pumped up about coming to Argus, because he would really like to sell some stuff, which, that's his job, but after the guy sat and listened to him, they realized what importance it is, and it is. So, and the washer extractor, something, you know, lasts three or four months, is what I've really been working on that really hard about, and I've reached out to a lot of my friends in the fire service across the state, and got some ideas of where to go pricing things, I got some people coming sometime this month, that install industrial things, and they're gonna, and that's one of the things I wanna do, is, this, this is an industrial washer extractor and a dryer, then people come and install it, make sure it works, and make sure it works right. And the people I talked to, they, they even started naming off the people that I need to be talking to about getting the chemicals from, because they'll look at what we're trying to do, and pre-mix our chemicals, and ship them in five-gallon pails, all we gotta do is put a dipstick into it, and drain it out, and use it. They'll know this guessing, do I need a quart of this, or a pint of this, it'll all be done for us. They even said, started getting, looking at people like this already, so...
Hi. What?
Well, he, what Mark's trying to do is not spend the budget.
I understand that.
That's what he's trying to do.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, the, the money's there to go ahead and buy this, the detectors and the other stuff, and just kinda complete our budget for next year, that's what he's trying to get away from.
That's, you know, like I said, we, we haven't had these things for a lot of years, we've never had these things, you know, we got a washer and dryer over there right now that is a residential washer and dryer, it is very detrimental to turnout gear, because it's an agitator, so we're very selective by using it if we do it all, and we, we haven't had it for years, so to go out and buy it tomorrow is not the idea. The idea is to get it funded, and to get it funded, so we save as much as we can to get it done right.
Yeah, I'm talking about the gas detectors.
The gas detectors, same way, you know, we've, we've been without those for years. EMS, I don't know where Richie's said anything, or he saw the bill come across, but EMS did buy CO detectors for their people, there's one, each one of the ambulances now, that their people can power up, 'cause you go into a house, and I'm gonna talk to Cory more about that part, if you go into the house, somebody down, you double-wide their handle, CO detector might save your life. Richie already bought two for his EMS personnel.
So, we send them in first?
So, and that's exactly right, and the, the understanding is with Richie, that we can use those to help us a little bit, until we get this other project going along, so...
He's just looking for nine hundred bucks commitment from the councils, five percent on this project's what he's looking for. Why, again, is it to see you'll back his percent for the grant, I mean, that's how it works.
I'll make a motion that we back the Argus Fire Department's five percent for the, for the money that they need to buy this equipment, but I'm not saying it correctly.
I second.
Yeah, a motion of second to back the Argus Fire Department. Yeah, the five percent, yeah, and they're gonna write a grant, cover the other, cover the other five percent.
And, no, we'll come up, we're gonna come up with five percent out of our own, our fundraising money.
And the grant will be, be all...
The grant will take care of the rest of it, yep. And then later, and like I said, I'm, I'm looking at a couple of the grants for the turnout gear, if, if we do those later on next year, or, yeah, twenty seventeen, we're gonna be looking at that, some of, some of the other guys have jumped on board with this, and they're kinda helping with some of this, so, um, we're moving a little along, some of it a little faster, I really wanted to, because I'd like to get a little more research, but we're getting there, so, but this one, we need to have it done by February first, so...
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Just so people know, that the department's fundraising money has went for their equipment, that grass truck sitting over there was bought by the fire department, not by the town.
Since I've been on the fire department, and I've been on a while, a few years back, somebody asked me how much we gave back for fundraisers. And I did the math, and it's someplace close to near the hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the fire crew.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Any other old business?
And you too, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm from the old school, everybody's a guy until approved different.
New business. We're gonna table the park board appropriation for this meeting. Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fourteen, holiday, paid holiday for two thousand seventeen. What'd you say?
It's been the same since I've been on. Is anything new been added? Is this the same, the same, or the same one?
I just questioned Friday, December twenty-second. Well, it was, Christmas Eve has always been our holiday, so that was, it's actually a Saturday and it's Sunday, is that correct? So, it's the week before and Monday after.
Now, Christmas is on Monday.
Next year, Christmas is on Monday.
Oh, so it's Sunday and Monday, so instead of having Monday and Tuesday off, which would be our two holidays, we went Friday and Monday, or Friday and Tuesday. Otherwise, we would've had Monday, Tuesd- yeah, would've been like four days.
You're taking Friday and Monday instead of...
No, they're taking Friday and Tuesday.
Instead of Monday, Tuesday.
Just like this year, Christmas is on Saturday and Sunday.
So, we're taking a Friday and a Monday.
So, we're taking a Friday and a Monday this year.
I'm used to working for myself. Christmas Eve is Christmas Eve, Christmas Day is Christmas Day, so... You don't get those days off during the week, 'cause...
Well, it just depends, because it falls on a Saturday and Sunday, Saturday or Sunday?
Right, but if Christmas is on Monday, you get Christmas Day off, and you don't get the Friday before, but Christmas Eve, and Christmas Eve is technically Sunday. I mean, I'm okay with it, like I say, I'm just used to...
That's the way it works where I work.
Yeah, I mean, I'm used to the self-employment mentality, you know, extra days on, just that, I'm used to going.
If it happens that way, what?
I'll, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty sixteen dash fourteen, as we've written.
A second, that.
Got a motion of second to pass ordinance twenty sixteen dash fourteen, any further discussion?
I have the same, I, I, I feel the same she does, in the same aspect, but it's been this way for, since I've been on it ten years, and it hasn't been killing anything, so there's no reason to fight over this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Christmas light decoration contest, are we gonna do it? For the businesses and the residents?
Whatever we did last year.
Yeah, we'll do the same thing we did last year. For those of us, of us that's been going for the past thirteen years, what is, what does the contest consist of, and what do you grade it on, and who's the winner, and is...
You put up your Christmas decorations, the pilot news, if they're so willing to do it again this year, drives around and does the judging, and there, they tell us who to give the money to. And you do it between now and Christmas, so, it would be done between now and the next meeting, two weeks. If that's okay with you, Jim, he's up for it. I'll make a motion, we do the Christmas light decorations as we did last year, same prices.
Second. Got a motion of second to do the Christmas light decoration contest, same as last year with the businesses and the homes, and the same prices. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, salary ordinance adjustments. Anything new, we just need a...
Thank you, motion, we pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, changes.
Second.
Got a motion of second to do, pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, with the changes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Is that a first reading?
Oh.
Yeah.
I'll do it again.
We'll do it again.
I make a motion, we suspend the rules, and pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen on all three readings. Thank you, I'm so used to automatically doing that.
I second.
Got a motion of, got a motion of second to suspend rules and pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen on all three readings. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash sixteen, we're table. So, we gotta do your evaluation. I should be easy. Employee handbook, two thousand seventeen. What you did tonight, if you wanna pass it as the, the changes, or the one we just bring up for the next meeting? We're all in agreement with the changes. To get it done. Get it done.
I move we approve the handbook with the changes that we suggested tonight.
I'll second that.
Got a motion of second to approve the employee handbook for the town of Argus with the changes that we made tonight for two thousand seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Reach a word. We've talked about it before, we talked finally a little bit tonight, so...
I forget, is this an automatic, if we do it for one year, we have to go to two years?
No, you do not have to go to two years, if you try it for one year and you don't like it, you can cancel. And a gentleman that I spoke to today told me it would take about fifteen minutes to set it up and train us how to do it. And then, the citizens have to sign up for it, and they have to, um, they're allowed four phone numbers and four email addresses, you weren't here when we were kinda discussing it, so... Per household, um, anybody would be able to sign up for it, it wouldn't just be for the town, it would also be for anybody in the four-six-five-oh-one zip code.
How will we notify people that they can't sign up?
Well, and he's gonna provide me with a letter that we could send out to everybody, or, and I can also put it on Facebook, our town website, you know what I mean, and, um, you can make as many network admins as you want, so you could all be network admins, so you could add whatever you wanted to them, you can make private groups, so like, Jamie could make him and all the employees a group, you could make the town council a group, you can also contact individual households, tell them that, you know, this is their last day to pay their electric bill before they're shut off. And there's no limit to the, how many messages.
It's reasonable, I think, I mean, a year, you're gonna know.
I'll make a motion, we do with reach out word for one year, for trial basis, town gonna put this.
How do I do that? It, it would have to probably be the town doing it, because there's no way that we can fill the people outside of town.
Yeah.
It would have to be by kind of a, kind of our advertising.
I second.
Got a motion of second to move on and continue with reach alert, continue, start easy, reach alert. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
And he did say that he would, um, he'd start it tomorrow, but our contract would actually not start till January first, so we'd get like a few weeks. We can do the latter, yes. Now, I don't know that we have every address, but we could maybe do a bulk postcard, remember we talked about doing that for MACOD, um, a bulk postcard to anybody in four-six-five-oh-one zip code.
Because a lot of those, we'd wanna reach would not, may not have.
Right.
Technology.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
Any other new business? Moving on, claims, thirteen fifty-three through fourteen eighty.
Hey, I did add the EMS pay, the fire pay, police commission pay, and park board pay to this tonight, so I finally got everybody done. The total docket is three hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. The top five claims are, number one is Impa for a hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-two cents, number two is payroll number twenty-three for thirty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, payroll number twenty-four for thirty thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-nine cents, Tracy Thayer Construction for thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and two cents, Republic Services at eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents. The total of the top five claims is two hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents, and it represents fifty-nine percent of the total docket. The total of the top five claims is $229,977.37 and it represents 59% of the total docket. She was not paid twice, the one I voided, um, I don't know why I did this. When I did her check the first time, it said Nicole Stevens, but the check actually wrote Aid Corporation and it had, um, a different address. And when I looked it up in fund accounting, somebody had changed the, um, when I looked it up, I looked it up by her name, somebody had changed everything under her name to Aid Corporation and a different address. So I had to void that check and then I had to redo another check, so.
And what's wrong with...
That check was voided.
1365. It's a reboot.
Oh, that's just an employee per, um, it was a line item, that was zero. The fund, the rest of it is 1365 also, if you look at the other numbers. Normally I don't put the zeros in there, but I probably must like the payment just.
Long story.
I can bring you the correction if you want, Suzanne.
If you look at the stipend, nearest difference is cause of park board pay for reading, not just one set filled.
Right, yeah.
It's a big difference.
Oh, yes.
Just to the reaches, walk the companions.
I had a line where the body was defined.
I'll make a motion, we accept claims 1353 through 1480 in the amount of $388,851.50.
Second. Got a motion to second to accept claims 1353 through 1480 in the amount of $388,000, All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Need to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second. Got a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be ready.